We'd ask that everyone would please rise and join Pastor Wes Gable of United Methodist Church as he leads us in our invocation.
Father, we thank you for the gift of Fergus Falls, the community, the people that you've worked with, the leadership that you provided, the grace and wisdom and the blessing of this city even through adversity, for the wisdom and grace and industry of the people. Father, we thank you for those who've served in places where they've been in stress, whether it's in fighting fires and saving and rescuing people in difficult, dangerous situations, whether it's offering law enforcement and police protection, whether it's dealing with major issues that affect the future of the city. Father, we ask your blessing upon those that serve in those roles, those that have to make decisions. But we ask today as well as special blessing on their families that often find themselves sacrificing or working through anxious moments while their loved ones are serving the best interests of the city. We ask your grace, your love, and your power and your favor poured out into their lives and to the lives of their families and into the work of this city and the blessing it offers people, not only here, but whoever's touched by the people here. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, October 16th, 2017, and I'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda will be the approval of the agenda. I'll ask our city administrator if there's any additions or corrections to the agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Under "Old Business," we have to add a dairy property update. We have Steve Erickson with us this evening who's going to give us a quick update on where we're at with that process. Then the only other request that I would make if the council's willing is to move the fire department fee schedule discussion up right after the badge ceremony. I know that we have all the firemen in attendance tonight, and they have a meeting at 6 o'clock. So just to be respectful of their time, it would be nice if the chief could be here to address those questions and then be at the fire hall by 6.
I definitely think we can do that. Is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
Your Honor, could we add the bikeable community workshop? Because there's an application deadline due on that by December 1.
Do you want to take that?
I can.
And we'll put that under "New Business." Is bike-friendly workshop?
Bikeable community workshop.
Your Honor?
Yes, Roger.
I also had a question, and I don't know if it got put on here, Andrew, but we were... I believe we should discuss when we sell city land, that should go not into the general fund or into another project or fund for other land and development. So I just would like a discussion on that. Because we're selling land and it's going into the general fund, and I think we need to discuss it. New business? I don't know.
Can we get Andrew some time on that one? I mean, that's kind of a question that's going to be a little bit loaded.
It's a policy question, Your Honor, I believe, and that's just a policy. Are we going to take assets and put them in general fund? Or are we going to keep them aside from general fund? So that's my opinion. I'd like to discuss it briefly.
Sure. We can definitely bring the subject up. We won't expect necessarily any action, but we can definitely get our opinions on the record and ask for anything from staff. Is that fair? Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin and Jim. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, and we have no bids to award. Under petitions and communications, we have a proclamation declaring October 16th as Best Robotics Day. And we're very fortunate to have some good friends of mine in the audience today to introduce this to us. Robotics team, would you like to step forward? For those of you on TV who can't see, we have a robot with us as well. This is the official proclamation of the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota. So David, or Thomas, I'm sorry.
Whereas encouraging youth to pursue careers in engineering, science, technology, and mathematics is important to Minnesota's future, and whereas BEST, which stands for boosting engineering, science, and technology, inspires students to pursue careers in engineering, science, and technology, and mathematics through robotics design, and whereas engineering, science, technology, and mathematics are an integral part of Fergus Falls' community, and whereas education in these areas is important for Fergus Falls' future, and whereas Central Ex Robotics, a Fergus Falls middle school and high school team who won BIZE and BEST Robotics Competition and the Northern Plains Regional Robotics Competition in 2016, now...
Therefore, aye. Ben Shire, Mayor of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim December 1st shall be observed in the city of Fergus Falls as Best Robotics Day on the 16th day of October 2017. Elizabeth, did you want to tell us, give us an update about the team?
Yeah. So my name is Elizabeth Grothberg. I'm in 11th grade, and I'm the CEO this year of Central Ex Robotics. And this is our robot, Sparky. This year we compete on October 28th at NDSU. And I would like to personally invite you all to the competition. We will compete against different teams in this region to move on to regionals.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Could we repeat when it was?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, October 28th.
October 28th. That's Saturday. October 28th in Fargo?
Yep, NDSU.
NDSU, okay. Well, thank you very much, you guys, and best of luck to you and your team. They do get points, by the way, for coming as part of their competition for coming in front of the city council, presenting, and getting a proclamation. Anything we can do to help. Good luck. All right. Next, we will have the fire department swearing-in ceremony.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Our family, friends, coworkers, guests, special guests, Fire Chief, retired Sparky Hublin, allowing us to take part in doing the badge ceremony here at an already busy council meeting. And also just to, a quick tidbit on the robotics team, they made it by the fire station last, what was it, Thursday or something like that, to tour the trucks, because one of their themes this year is putting out fires and lifting up containers as if it's a hazardous materials release. So they're getting some ideas, so it was really cool to see that group and the ambition that they have. Tonight, we have six members of the department that joined us in September 1st of last year. Throughout this, throughout the year, they've attended, all have attended over 160 hours of initial firefighter training and hazardous materials training alongside fellow firefighters throughout the region. This initial training is on top of the regular department training, meetings, prevention activities, and incident responses that we have had here locally. I'm also very proud to say that they have all passed their International Fire Service Accreditation Congress, or as we commonly refer to as IFSAK, firefighter 1 and 2. Just as the name says, this is an international accrediting agency that involves a comprehensive practical and written test. All of our members on the department are required to obtain this certification, and it's a huge accomplishment for these six members who did this within their first year. So for that, congratulations to those members. These members are a great addition to our fire department family, and it is our goal to ensure that they have the support they need to be successful to our organization and those we serve. And interesting is, as I was putting together some notes, I seen a quote that came across, an email from Seth Godin last week. Some of you may be subscribed to his blogs, but it was, it caught my eyes. It was labeled, "You're Doing It Wrong." And as new members, sometimes we find it fitting, because you know, you're new to the organization. There's tons to learn, lots to do. But the quote continued on, "But at least you're doing it. Once you're doing it, you have the chance to do it better. Waiting for perfect means not starting." So true hats off to these members for taking the step into the fire service. And I highly, highly encourage, even though you may hear, "You're doing it wrong," from time to time, don't let it stop you from trying to make us better. Be a constant learner of the fire service. Use your talent and expertise to ensure we are providing the best service possible for those who call upon us. At this time, I'll call each member up, and we'll get them up here. There'll be six of them, and if you would leave them with the firefighter oath. And we'll do the oath together, and at that point, then we'll invite the family to come up to do the actual pinning of the badge. All right. Firefighter Carl Ischnowitz, firefighter TJ Goulet, firefighter Joe Beenick, firefighter Sam Hanson, firefighter Nate DeGroot, and firefighter Chris Wieter. And you can see in your handout their employers. So again, also a hats off to their employers for allowing these members or their employees to leave at a moment's notice, which sometimes is challenging to do, as we all know that our works are challenging, our lives are busy. But again, a huge hats off to their employers as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to leave these six in the firefighter oath of office?
I declare myself a fire fighter of Fergus Falls.
I declare myself a firefighter of Fergus Falls.
I will, to the best of my ability...
I will, to the best of my ability...
faithfully discharge my duties to the Fergus Falls Fire Department.
I faithfully discharge my duties to Fergus Falls Fire Department.
As citizens of Fergus Falls.
As citizens of Fergus Falls.
I will promote and protect the best interest of the Fergus Falls Fire Department.
I will promote and protect the best interest of the Fergus Falls Fire Department.
I further understand and accept...
I further understand and accept...
that this badge is a symbol of public faith.
That this badge is a symbol of public faith.
And aware and honored...
And aware and honored...
as a public trust, we pledge...
As a public trust, we pledge...
to be true to the fire service.
To be true to the fire service.
I want to stand.
I want to stand.
And at this time, if the family of those that are up here, or friends that are going to be pinning, please join your firefighter, and we'll go through pinning of their badge. All right. Once everybody has their badge, you can take it out and then go ahead and place it on the firefighter.
Don't go too deep.
Interestingly, we did try to pre, you know, pre-foot holes in the shirt so it would be a little easier, but in front of a crowd, it gets a little challenging.
Stop the sharp in the pins.
And with that, your six newest sworn members of the Fergus Falls Fire Department. You can get them on the button. Then at this time, if you want to head in, firefighters Dean, Deputy Chief Anderson, and Assistant Chief Neville will lead you into the hall common area if you want to do pictures. Other firefighters are welcome to go and pin that as well.
To all of our firefighters in attendance, and I thank you for everything you do. And to our newest members, welcome to the best force in the state. All right. With that, we will move to item number one under ordinance resolutions, fire department fee schedule. And ultimately, we'll be looking for a resolution to approve the 2018 fee schedule. Andrew, did you want to kick this off?
Good evening again. So what I will do, if it's all right, I will go over the proposed fee schedule, similar to what we did approximately about a month ago, and then kind of highlight some of the changes that were in there. I know it should be in your packet, the current 2017 fee schedule, and then also the proposed 2018 fee schedule with some of the notable changes. As I go down, again, working off of the 2018 proposed, is looking at calls for service that city residents or businesses, the first four hours listed as no charge, and then thereafter being an hourly usage rate. And the key to that one is deals with our mutual aid contracts in that if we actually had a significant event here in town, one that would drive us, you know, several hours into the response where we had to have those mutual aid partners here after that four-hour mark is when they can begin to charge us based on their on-scene usage. Our usage rates mirror that of the Otter Tail County Mutual Aid Contract is what, so it'd be what they're billing us off of. So that is one where that four-hour no-charge limit comes into play. The other one is also dealing with the emergency management field. And if there was a disaster declaration, is that having that usage fee schedule as part of our, you know, proposed fees is that we have a billable rate for if we ever had a significant event where we had a FEMA declaration, that instead of just looking at what are our personnel hours, we actually have a charge rate for apparatus plus personnel built in there, which reflects the usage rates down below with the aerial truck, NFPA, 1,000 gallon per minute pumper, tanker, rescue truck, and alike. Rural contract resident businesses, going to a first two hours, no charge. And again, this is based off of the budget that we put together and that we meet with a tax levy is based on what it takes to be a city fire department. From there, our rural contracts pay a percentage of our budget. So in a sense, they're actually reducing the cost to the city, the city residents, by them paying into that budget. We currently have it to where we have no first hour grace periods or anything like that. So if we respond to somebody's home in the rural area, it's a charge right out of the gate to where this would be trying to give them some credit of this two-hour mark of allowing us to respond there without a charge. And then the non-resident business, the first hour, no charge. And some of this mostly comes into play with, if you use an example, car fires that we may have in our response area. Underneath our previous or our current fee schedule, vehicle fires for a city resident is no charge, non-resident is billed out at 300. One of the things through doing research and looking at the League of Minnesota City for some guidance is that if we want to charge non-residents first hour charges, we have to apply those evenly amongst the entire fire department operation. So really, by giving these non-residents a first hour no charge, we're trying to avoid any type of pitfalls that we could see with that of billing somebody at a higher rate for the same service. Then as we go down, fire alarm activations. We've had this in the past to where if we go to four or more false alarms, that we begin to bill. We actually did reduce the cost on that, and it was to mirror our public safety partner at the police department. So it's a similar rate with that one. Motor vehicle crash. Currently, we have a tour of a crash that is involved in our rural response area or the non-resident, that we have a $300 initial charge, and then a charge for if we utilize the extrication tool. Proposed there is that we even the field there in that we have an extrication fee for our entire response area. And again, that's coming off of not having a resident fee that's different than a non-resident fee. So if we're choosing to bill, we need to apply those equally across the field. Hazardous materials, we've had that in our fee schedule in the past. Previous one, a hazmat incident within the city limits, no charge for their first hour, and then hourly charge thereafter. And again, with that one, the intensity that hazmat can bring to this, to an incident, is high. And the amount of resources that are needed can be challenging and quite plenty to where we might have to call in some significant backup support to handle an incident. The other thing with hazmat is a lot of the ones we deal with are over the road. So again, we're dealing with the motoring public, not always, you know, a resident in their home. Technical rescue, similar there is the charge rate that was in the, for our rural response area in the past. And again, this one's just looking at evening that playing field and adding consistency to our fee schedule. That technical rescue is applied universally across the area and not just something that's subject to a non-resident or a rural response. Careless illegal burning. Illegal burning's been in our fee schedule in the past, and that's $200, which no change there except we did add the per-hour usage rate. And what this careless or illegal burning is, it's really, if you think about the red flag warning days that we hear on the radio, "Don't go light a fire," that's when we're looking to apply this. So that, there's been enough advance warning through the media that we don't want people burning. So if they choose to light a fire on purpose, and again, this isn't accidental or anything like that, but this is, you know, an actual, them admitting that, you know, "I didn't think it would really cause a big problem." This is what that's intended to go after. And then our usage rates, again, like I said earlier, those come right out of the Otter Tail County Mutual Aid Contract that we're a part of. All 17 fire departments within the county agree to these usage rates per the apparatus. With that, fire lockbox, you know, no change there, based on actual cost. Funhouse rental, and then recreational burning. And again, this one has to do with our city residents for the bonfires. Or not bonfire, recreational fire, if you want to have a backyard recreational fire. We want people to come in and get a permit, you know, no cost to it. What it allows us to do at the fire station is basically have a one-on-one conversation with the city resident. We describe the do's and don'ts of those recreational fires. And then we have them leave there with a recreational permit that we keep on file and have an understanding of where some of those are at. Just as it comes down to the enforcement side of it, a lot of times it does fall on law enforcement. But if they stop and they'll ask if there's a recreational permit that they can show, and as long as they have it onsite and they're within the legal parameters, usually those fires are allowed to go. Now, when they don't have the permit, then we can basically tell them that they need to quit out that fire.
Ryan, is that yearly?
The, we did make a change there, and that was even before my time, that if you own the property, it's good for the lifetime as a property owner. So it's visiting the fire station one time. Before, it was a yearly, so they'd have to come in and renew, not anymore. So the other, the big caveat to that is if you rent, is to make sure that you have the owner's permission before you come to the fire station to ask for those permits.
Ryan, could you just recap a little bit on how many fires have actually gone over four hours? I think that was one of the concerns of the residents.
Yep. For city residents, there was, looking back to, again, 2015, just trying to take a snapshot, we had two incidents that would involve private residents. One that went five hours and 28 minutes, one that was for about five hours. And again, diving into those a little bit, I think it was council member Fish that I said, "I'll do some homework to really see what we were doing on scene for that time." And it was one crew that was there. And again, not to completely speculate, but the likelihood of them working on an investigation was likely why that ran such a longer period, which again is not a chargeable fee amongst this fee schedule. So fire investigation is something that we have to do. So we could be there for three hours, longer, and we don't bill for that.
One question I got, as I received a bunch of phone calls also, is by looking this, unless I'm reading it wrong, it's appearing that the taxpayers, the residents, are actually increasing and the people who are non-residents are going down. So the people who are paying the taxes for the services and everything else, who used to have no charge for their fire, are now going to be paying for a service when somebody who's outside the city limits, who's not paying for this service, is going to be getting at a cheaper rate. And that's where I have a problem.
Sure. And, you know, to clarify that, and again, it's based off of those service contracts or fire township contracts, again, are based off of our fire department budget that we established to be a city fire department. And they reduce our overall fire department budget to the city tax rates by about 17% to 18% is what they end up paying into our budget. So in a sense, some of those are our first dollars that are available there to cover the cost. However, again, there are some things outside of our normal operating budget, you know, capital, equipment, over and above the money that we put away every year, that, again, that's where the two-hours no charge versus four-hours for mutual aid is a factor there.
Did you, Ryan, also say that the difference between last year... Does League of Minnesota City have a policy, or did they... That you can't charge non-residents?
When looking, yep. So again, fees being something new to me, it forces a person to, you know, dive into it a little bit and try to understand the process. And again, one of their guiding documents, one was listed in 2010 when they actually had a, if you want to call it a memo, put out for fire department billing. And then the other one was 2016, with Fire Department Management and Liability Issues, is where it talks about fire service fees. And it's what lists in there is about the ability of a fire department to charge more for a non-resident versus a resident. And that's where they said that that a lot of times is run afoul because of the right for fair travel and basic necessities. So if you choose not to basically charge your residents at same rate, you shouldn't be applying that to a non-resident traveling through your community. And so that's, again, where that's coming from, taking that advice from that guiding document.
Your Honor, I think we should just further clarify for Mr. Thompson the fact that non-residents or the rural contracts, those individuals are paying taxes to cover the contracts that we have with the townships. So whether they're rural or in the city limits, they are paying taxes towards the operation of the fire department. Just, I want to make that clear, because I know there's been some talk of that around the community as well. So everybody that is within our service territory that's covered either in the city limits or under a rural contract does pay taxes towards the fire department and towards the capital expenditures and the operation of the fire department.
Isn't it also true, correct me if I'm wrong, but they have a choice of which fire department they have a contract with? So if they decide not to go with us, it would mean that way our taxes would go up.
Again, it is great that, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say exactly, if we were to lose one of the townships, we would be burdening the local residents to make up for that loss in tax revenue.
And then not to mention the other plus of having our surrounding townships is that we get to respond there. So, you know, again, I'll use the example of the businesses that outline our community that aren't in the city limits but are in the rural protection area. That's, you know, for our residents who would venture there or support there. If it's not our area, then we don't have control over that. We're not the ones responding to the extrication crash. We'll likely be responding to the fire. We'll likely be responding to the fire because we have mutual aid contracts.
Other questions?
Yeah, just a comment. I've had a lot of discussions with some folks on this, talked to Ryan about it, talked to others. I do have some disagreements on going from a no charge for residents to a charge and I've tried to explain those to Ryan and others. And basically because that, the amount that we kind of safeguard there for the city might be $68,000 as I understand it over the last so many years. So, you know, I would like us to remain at, I would like to pass the fees as you proposed with one exception. And I would like to propose an amendment that we remain, the residents remain at no charge. Partly because the perception is there that we are charging residents, we haven't done it before, which is actually a correct perception, even though it's very unlikely. And partly because I still think we need to talk more about the fees in general. And just everyone's, you know, understanding on this, you know, there are precious few reasons that people live, I think, within the city of Fergus Falls. We give people many reasons to live outside the city and that includes opportunities for certain developments, building, et cetera. I do believe we have to protect all the interests of the taxpayers very zealously. And so in this case, even though it's unlikely, I'm going to be voting against this motion unless the amendment passes where we just don't charge residents at one item. So I'd like to propose that, Your Honor.
Motion to amend?
Yeah, a motion to amend that for that, just that one item, that there is no charge for residents.
I'll second that one.
Yes, motion and a second. So we're not voting on, we're just voting on the amendment for now and then we'll vote on the proposal.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Specifically, would this not be picked up by the insurance company of the house owner?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I mean, obviously, as the recipient of a couple of fires, I, you know, I mean, obviously, I used to live in the outside of Fergus and I got a bill from Fergus Falls Fire Department. And, I mean, obviously, my insurance company paid it. So, you know, I don't, I mean, I just kind of wonder if that's, you know, who's really, who's actually writing the check?
I've been in the same situation and my insurance company didn't pay. I had two of them and they did not pay.
Insurance company paid for my second one, too.
Can we ask Fire Chief to reiterate what he said about not being able to charge the residents and non-residents differently under the League of Minnesota Cities? Could you just reiterate that one more time?
Yeah. And again, the application of a usage charge across all playing fields, granted, it's different levels, it's an hour, two hour, four hour, but it's showing that we have a practice of billing all users of the fire department, it's just at what level. And again, that determination was based off of the guidance that I had found through the League of Minnesota Cities to not have a resident fee versus non-resident fee that are different. And again, that's where coming up with the hour limits is that we want everybody to call the fire department if they need us and call us early because there's so much more that we can do if we're called early than ever worry about, what's this going to cost me? And by doing that one hour, two hour, four hour, we really feel that we're trying to safeguard that, that we can get people to call us early and without fear of what the cost is.
Your Honor?
Thank you.
Just, to my understanding, I've heard that argument and I know it applies to hazmat and the people coming through town, but I really question about the contractual services that are different than the ones that we're talking about. So, and I do think it's a council decision, it's not a staff decision about policy and what we do on this, that we have to decide, are we going to do this for residents or not? And it's pretty straight up. It's not, you know, yes, there's lots of fear factors you can throw in, but honestly, do you want to change, start charging residents for this or not? That's all I'm asking this amendment and I think we should just vote on up or down.
Your Honor, we're not trying the staff to dictate policy, we're simply providing our recommendation with the guidance that we've received from the League of Minnesota Cities and it is your decision to make, but we're just giving you the information that we have.
Any other comments or questions?
Just, just for clarification, what Councilmember Speedo is saying is that where it reads the first four hours would be no charge, you're seeing, and then each additional hour based on usage?
Strike that.
You're striking that so that there would be, you're striking the words or just, you know, there will be no additional?
That's correct. It would remain as 2017, it just says no charge.
And we'll vote here. But one thing, we won't go into this now, but I do have to take a little bit of exception to a precious few reasons people live in Fergus Falls. I think you would, we can go back and discuss that. I think there's lots of reasons people live in Fergus Falls. We won't go down that rat hole right now. So everyone understand the...
I have a question for Ryan. What, do we have an idea what the budgetary impact would be if we charged residents for that service as proposed versus no charge? Do you have, based on past activity history, do you have any idea what that would be?
After the four hours?
Yeah.
Well, again, looking back at the, again, going back 2015 is just a quick run query and looking at those reports, that even though they went over four hours, looking at these, there wouldn't have been a charge because again, it had to do with the investigative services on why that call was open for that long. It was a small crew that was there and reading through the narrative. Again, the four hour thing is that, you know, again, planning ahead, looking at vulnerabilities is that catastrophic incident where we are actually getting billed from our mutual aid partners was, you know, the, a reasoning behind this and what that four hour mark plays a role in, is that's when we can incur outside cost. We can still cover our internal costs because we plan through that through the budgetary process, but it's those external costs that come into play that we don't always have as much control over. And we try, you know, I will say that bringing in mutual aid fire departments, we respect their time just as much as they respect ours and we go help them and we, you know, sometimes it's a magical three hours and 50 minutes, we're turning them loose. However, there are those times that we got to be prepared for, whether it's a significant fire event, whether it's a disaster event, that these could apply for.
Scott, did you have a comment?
And these fees, I mean, like, let's just use the Castleton incident. I mean, that would break, if we didn't have this fee in place, that would really hurt us or probably break our budget completely.
It'd be challenging, however, that one we could mark as a hazard.
It could, it could. But I'm just saying, if we have a catastrophe. So, and the other thing is, if we have these fees in place that we put in place, we can also waive those fees if somebody comes in and says, "You know what, I can't pay this." We can, as a council, can waive it, even if it's in place. So I'm going to vote yes for this. I mean, I want to vote against Rod's amendment, I want to vote yes for that.
Any other comments or questions on the amendment? Otherwise, we're going to vote. So everyone understand the amendment? I'm voting to amend this fee schedule to have no fee, I'm sorry, no fee, no 2017 fee schedule. Okay? Everyone understand? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Both same sign?
Aye.
Motion is defeated. Is there any further discussion on the fee schedule as presented in our packet?
I will offer the resolution for the fee schedule.
I'll second. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Hicks.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Speedo.
No.
Resolution is approved. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Under the open forum this evening, Scott Kwame is going to speak to us regarding RTC development proposal and Phase One demolition package. Mr. Kwame?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. Let's see. Let's see how this works.
You might have to turn it on. I don't brand.
Oh, yeah, I'll put it there.
There we go. Okay. Here to talk about some activity that I'd be interested in doing up on the RTC. This is the map that was out in the STANTEC with the Phase One redevelopment demolition package. And this is just a sky view of the area in particular that I'm looking to talk about tonight with the memorial building right in the center of that picture. Okay. And then this map has some additional numbers and graphs on it, I'll mention here. Tonight, I'm going to ask the council to decide to move forward on two options regarding a relatively small development on the RTC campus. The first topic is the potential development of building number 29, also known as the memorial building. And the second topic concerns the preservation of one gazebo, number 54, and the 300 feet of tunnel that connect building number 29 to building number 27. 27 is often called West Detached. Earlier this year, an offer was made to the Friends of the Kirkbride to consider doing something with the memorial building and nothing came of this offer. And so I began to think about what uses might work for this building. I now present this plan on my own behalf and I'm not as a representative for any other group or other individual. I'm very interested in the future of the Kirkbride and would like to see it fully developed into a place of growing economic activity for the city. This request is small and specific. Develop a usable space and begin to use it. The memorial building is relatively small and the potential uses are many. While this plan certainly needs to be fully fleshed out, I would like to rehab the memorial building into a usable public space and market it as an Airbnb destination. The upper floor would have two or three apartment type suites. The main floor would be primarily a meeting space. The lower floor would have restrooms, a kitchen and an office or two. A museum will be incorporated into the main and lower floors with the history of the Kirkbride on display. With restrooms and a kitchen onsite, the building and the ground surrounding it will be used for meetings and activities of all kinds. Some examples would be wedding receptions, holiday and company parties, arts and cultural events. It would be an excellent stop on the trails that are now being developed throughout the area, Glacial Edge Trail, North Country Trail, these other trails that are being developed. Tours of the Kirkbride could start and end here. And it could become the base for further development of programs that could grow into other spaces on the campus that are yet to be developed. For the purposes and uses described here, the grounds surrounding the memorial building are crucial. And that is why I'm requesting that the council consider adding an optional deduct to the current Phase One bid package for demolition. The gazebo number 54 is structurally in good shape and it will be very useful for the activities on the lawn. The tunnel linking building 29 to building 27 is significant primarily as a historical feature on the campus. It will also provide a useful functional link between the two buildings in the future and it could serve as a storage area for event supplies and decorations, things like that. According to Bruce Paulson with STANTEC earlier this year, he said this section of tunnel is the most preservable space or piece of the entire tunnel network. Demolition of this section of tunnel and the gazebo would dramatically lower the value of this space and would take away something that cannot be replaced. A tour of the Kirkbride would not be complete without a walk in the tunnel. The money saved by not demolishing this section of tunnel and one gazebo can certainly be put to good use elsewhere. Also included in this request is building number 52, the Morton Garage to the north. With the rehab work to be done to the memorial building and the surrounding grounds, the garage would be an advantageous part of the package. I do not expect this building to remain long-term as that campus is developed, as it has no historical value and any number of future development plans could end up using that area. But in the short term, having the garage or the access and use of the garage from which to work would be a terrific benefit. I'm not asking the council to approve this plan at this meeting, but simply to start the process to produce a detailed proposal that can be acted on at a later date. However, I am asking that the council decide tonight to add alternate number four deduct to the current Phase One demolition package to allow for the preservation of the gazebo building number 54 and for 300 feet of tunnel connecting buildings 29 and 27. There are already, for example, three deducts listed in Phase One, so that's why it's alternate number four. The timing of this request is important because the bid tour for prospective contractors is this coming Thursday, October 19th, and the bids will be received by November 2nd and awarded on November 6th. So action tonight would be best to move this along. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you like.
Thank you, Mr. Kwame. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Mr. Kwame?
I can, obviously, I was the one that made the proposal to both the Historical Society and the Friends of the Kirkbride to look at the memorial building. And I think, obviously, you know, finding a use for it, obviously, it is a single building, but, I mean, I think it would be good, Scott, if you developed that plan. I mean, I would be supportive of obviously trying to save that building. But I think, you know, the balance, saving the tunnel and the gazebo is not something that I could support when, you know, the tunnels are, you know, we have to kind of do something and I don't think the tunnels will ever be used and I don't think you'd be able to access them from a public point of view because they're not the right height and there'd be a lot of work to, you know, to actually refit the tunnels to make them safe for people to go in. So I encourage you to go down and, you know, find financial partners that would support you in your Airbnb. And, you know, once you've got those financial partners in place and a plan, come back to the council and we would support it in terms of giving you the building. I mean, it obviously has to be done on evaluation, but I think it would be a worthy cause.
Thank you, Anthony. Anyone else in the council have any comments or questions of Mr. Kwame?
I had a question on the tunnels, Your Honor.
Yeah, Darren?
Where does that actually run from between West Detached and Memorial Building?
Basically, on the center sidewalk to that point and then over. Right there and then that way.
So it's kind of an hell out to it or backwards?
It's a L, I'll back up here. It's a L or a T depending on how you measure it. The green parallelogram there is the lawn area, basically. And so then that space, you know, if the tunnels were removed, it would tear up that space, the possibility of losing a tree or two in there, that kind of thing. But that's where it is, to answer your question.
Okay, thank you. Rod?
Your Honor, how does that affect our bid that we're putting together now? I don't know, maybe the engineer or Bill can speak to any of this? Is it possible to go ahead with our, we're phasing, we're very much into that, you know, and we don't want to stop that process? Is it possible to continue that or is this going to throw a big pipe wrench into the works?
Are you passing mutual aid? Can I let Ryan answer your question?
Thank you and good evening. In regards to that, it's possible at this time it'd be handled through an addendum. However, I need to point out though, with the image showing there, you know, what Mr. Bruce Paulson was referring to, and this is all relative condition, what we're looking at is from Memorial Building to West Detached, at that intersection, as you move to east to the kitchen, those tunnels have been closed off for occupancy. They are so deteriorated that we had to close them down due to danger in those. That being said, to consider a component, what's included adjacent to the gazebo in farther east, that would take a lot, that would be a hindrance to the plans right now on the development. And if I can, and I'm just going to support this because I did do some research into this and if you can refer back to the 2015 mothballing report that did...
Do you want this one?
Oh, yeah, excellent.
You've got some other research, okay.
Oh, who's that? Here's the tunnels. And then this is from the 2015 mothballing report indicating, yes, 29 from a preservation standpoint. Currently, right now, STANTEC is doing a structural analysis in response to Shipos' request for the EAW. Now, if you can turn to the next, it might be, no, excuse me. Back to that same PDF, maybe scroll up. It has the pictures and this is on the city's website, too, as well. Go all the way to the top, please. Now, this is the building from, yes, that we're referring to now that could become, this tunnel is currently closed off and roped off. It is structurally, and if you can scroll up, please. As it's indicated on there, sudden non-detectable failure is possible. So if we were to consider something like this, saving a portion of this tunnel section, this could present a lot more detail where rehab is probably not an option on these portions of tunnel.
Could I follow that up just quick, Your Honor?
Sure.
Just to finish that, then if we were to take an addendum that only included the proposal of the memorial building, that is not, I don't think that's on the demo list right now, is it?
No. From the memorial building, yes, from the phase...
No, no, not the tunnels, I mean, just, just the memorial building.
Yes, the memorial building's not, I, I believe it's unassigned in our phases.
So we're not complicating our bid if we leave the, if we leave, if the memorial building could be looked at, right, in the future, if we can recruit staff to look at that? And we don't go after the tunnels, right? We leave, I mean, we, we continue with demolition of the tunnels, because not all tunnels are created equal up there. I, as a Boy Scout, we used to run around and I'm pretty sure there's larger tunnels in certain areas than, and smaller ones.
And that's also in some of the reports.
But, I mean, so I'm just saying that I think that we should consider that, the memorial, but not the, you know, not the tunnels on the other stuff, because that would complicate the bid, so.
So, yeah, what you're saying is what Anthony said is...
I'm just piggybacking.
Right, we're not complicate anything with the proposal other than the tunnels.
If I can piggyback on that.
Other than the tunnel or the gazebo.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I just had a question. So those pictures of the tunnels, is that the tunnel going east to west from the West Detached and the kitchen?
Yes.
Because there's a tunnel that goes obviously north to the memorial. Is that, is that...
That is, for, and only that's in one of the relatively good conditions in relative to the other tunnels.
But would there be access, so, I don't know, I guess I wasn't necessarily clear on, on his request. Is it just preserving the, the tunnel that runs north to south to the, to that perpendicular line that would go east to west?
I can answer that question.
And how would, how would you access that?
Exactly. The space that I identify was all of this, but the main connecting link here, that's the most significant. And so this piece, which is in the spousal major condition, as you said, that would be the piece that I would most, if anything beyond this, going this direction, because those are the pictures that we had are over in this area.
Actually, the whole tunnel from West Detach to the kitchen is closed at both terminal lengths. The only access is through the memorial building. But I believe, yes...
Yes, in section, it is in the best condition, as you said.
Yes, in relative, maybe, but also there's the dimensions also on the size illustrated, also per the mothballing report as well. So these are very narrow tunnels. Again, keep in mind too that these tunnels were not for the primary use to be occupied by people. This was a conduit to deliver utilities throughout the campus as well. So there is a, a varying degree of what, if it's to be repurposed, what that may be. And that's been discussed in quite some time as well, going through. So, that being said, it's up to the council on how they wish to proceed in regards to these tunnels. It could be handled through addendum, but like I mentioned, anything from the intersecting point of the tunnel between the memorial building and West Detach, anything going east is gonna take a, a more extensive amount of work to look at.
Thank you, Brian.
Can I just follow up on that?
Yeah.
Brian, isn't the West Detached in the worst shape of any of the buildings up there?
From building, from an exterior, if I recall, from last year, with the quotes on the masonry repairs, that required the most extensive amount of masonry repairs for that project, for preservation.
Thank you. Justin, do you have a comment?
I was just, I was just wondering, I mean, obviously, we haven't decided what to do with the West Detached. To his request, if I'm understanding what you're saying right, I'm, I'm for not delaying the process, but if we were to, I guess, I mean, is there a point of where we could save that heading north-south and then to West Detach for now, or would that completely delay the process as well regarding the tunnels?
One thing we gotta take in consideration too, though, we do have to have some sealing between, bulkhead-ing between these two buildings as well, which the whole impetus, or our primary impetus for this project was the mold, pavement, and water too as well. So that's another measure we gotta take into consideration.
Brad?
The concern that I'm having here is the council has finally come to an agreement on what they want to do. And we're looking at going after the, you know, the legislature next year for more money. And if we start backing away and doing what we did in the past, they're gonna look at that and they're gonna say, okay, we're gonna give you this money, we gave you all this money before, you repaired all these roofs. Now you're tearing down the buildings that you repaired the roof on. So unless we stay the course with this, we're gonna have a lot harder time getting money from the legislature next year, because they're gonna turn around and say, you guys are flip-flopping again.
Absolutely. Sure.
I'd like to make the proposal that Mr. Kwame come up with a plan on redeveloping the memorial building and, and we leave the bids process as it is.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that.
Yeah, and I guess I was just gonna comment before we vote on that, that I, I agree with what you said, Anthony. I think we can support, maybe we won't be able to support the, the deep, adding the deduct for the tunnels at this point, because we're already into the bid process. However, we can still support Mr. Kwame's efforts in, in getting a group together to preserve that building. And, and as I said, I think that would go a long ways to getting something done up there, so I support and applaud your efforts to do that. So, with that, any other questions? If not, everyone understands the motion? All favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Fine. Motion carries. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kwame. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. There's a copy in your packets, there's also a copy to be on the boards up here. Anthony's already asked that items number three and four be removed. Is there any other items that anyone would like to discuss individually?
I'd like to discuss number seven, Your Honor.
Seven? So we have three, four, and seven, any others? If not, I would offer, I would entertain a resolution to approve the remaining consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Next is item number three under the consent agenda. Anthony asked it to be pulled as the resolution accepting a donation from the Five Forty-four Foundation for the Community Arena in the amount of two hundred thousand, two hundred dollars. Which makes total to date collected of three million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Anthony?
And, and my question was kind of simply, what is the timeline on the remaining dollars? And, and is there a kind of an end date at which they would be collected and that we write off what isn't collected?
I bet you there's someone who knows that answer. Bill?
Well, I don't have the date exactly on the top of my head, but there is probably a number that still would maybe have four years left to pay. Because certain donations were structured over five years and others over ten years. And of course, we collected that sales tax over five years and that was done at the end of sixteen, so that tells me some people probably still have four years. So, we'll see donations trickling in now for quite a while.
Right, okay.
All right. Is there a resolution to accept that two hundred dollars?
Can I, can I ask a question real quick?
Jim?
Second.
Thank you.
Is there a way the council could act to, just to simply accept and approve all future donations, so we don't have to have this finance director prepare a memo every time we get a two hundred dollar donation?
They certainly can if they would like, that's certainly acceptable.
An annual update, maybe on where we're at?
Maybe, yeah, annually would be fine. I mean, I think we're down to, we're down to kind of like the small parts that are coming in, so.
And we've talked to the fundraisers and the people kind of in charge of that, and we truly expect to collect one hundred percent.
Right.
So I really don't have a doubt, I don't think we'll be writing anything off.
You okay to amend that?
Amended so that we just look at it annually?
Get an annual update?
I would, I would think semi-annual would, would be a little better.
Every six months? We're approving this two hundred dollars and we're amending it in the future to semi-annually. Everyone okay, everyone understand?
Are you comfortable with that?
Bill?
I am just fine with that.
All right, thank you, Bill. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Now we have the two hundred thousand dollar.
My question on this one, Mr. Sunwar, is, I just wanted to understand the matching funds in terms of kind of, obviously, assisting the community to understand that, is it that if we raise, obviously they're giving us two hundred thousand, but we actually only have to raise an additional hundred thousand to get three hundred thousand?
Correct.
Right.
So, we have a check sitting in the safe right now that we'll receive tomorrow for fifty thousand. And then when the fundraising, the foundation, what they're doing, and Aaron, correct me if I misspeak, but if they obtain more pledges for another fifty thousand, then that matching funds will be provided. Then the same thing will happen next year as well. Now, all of this, the matching and the, the grant come under the three million dollar fundraising goal. It's all part of that, but for this grant, it needed to be new pledges that we haven't had on file yet, so. So they're still hard at work, you know, closing in on that three million, and this is part of that.
So we need to encourage people and help raise a hundred thousand dollars above and beyond where we're at now.
Right.
To get, to get a hundred thousand more. Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
You have offered the resolution?
Sorry?
Would you offer that resolution?
I would offer that resolution, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. There's second? I'll second that, Your Honor. Thank you, Darren. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution authorizing the city of Fergus Falls to pay four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars to the Greater Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, two thousand and eighteen Environmental Action Fund, which is a voluntary assessment. Rod, did you have a question on that?
I did, Your Honor. Mr. Sunwar, can you tell us what we already pay the coalition for our general fees?
You're picking my memory tonight. It's, I would say is it around twenty-three thousand, it's twenty-some thousand for our standard fees.
Yeah.
It was twenty-three to twenty-six, somewhere in there.
Yeah, I think twenty-six, six in my mind, but it might be twenty-three. Okay, thank you.
No, it's somewhere in there.
Yeah. And, you know, having involved in some of the lobbying and talked to our legislators, I had two questions I'd pose to the council and others in this. Is this, what are our legislators for? What are they elected for? Does it provide a false sense of something's getting done because it's a large organization and we do pay them already? The second thing is, I believe that when we have issues that personal, that hiring lobbyists specifically for that, that is taking five thousand dollars, let's say, and hiring a lobbyist for an issue is more effective than shipping into this kind of a fund, although I realize it seems like a good idea. I just think, again, it's another cost that we assess our taxpayers, which I don't think is that necessary, so.
Okay, thank you, Rod. Any other comments?
Can you? Your Honor, just Environmental Action Fund, can we get a explanation of what that is?
Yes, so, I've enclosed that in the Environmental Action Fund, and it deals primarily with wastewater. And it's in a legislative report that's included in the packet and what it entails. And it, it primarily addresses kind of a watchful eye on the Minnesota Pollution Control's stance and EPA and how they're implementing the MPDS standards at the state level to the local level with our, particularly with our wastewater. Our effluent discharges, what's coming down the pipe, for lack of better terms, and futures for new threshold limits that they're imposing, such as mercury testing, things that we've never had any reports of. But they still like to include these threshold limits that ultimately cost us money. So it comes down to the reasonableness of what the PCA is imposing on us, and this action fund helps do the investigation for things of that nature. Keep, for instance, the landfill, that's another PCA, and that administered by the PCA, but with their new, their new interpretation of the existing guidance documentation and what that's imposed with the city through the re-permitting process. The same thing is here too with the wastewater treatment plan, we have to have permanent reassurance, and at that time, that's where it comes most effective for agencies like this to help us provide response to the PCA.
And I know, go ahead, Darren. I have a follow-up. Okay, so let me sort that out a little bit, because it goes back, that's kind of my reason for telling MPCA that they, they gotta reconsider their actions on that permitting process for up here at the treatment, or the dump. So where were they then? This, I mean, were they supposed to be the watchdog over MPCA, or do I misunderstand what you're saying?
There's other groups, landfill, landfill operators group, it's consortium of that help with that, we're, we're members on it, but it's not at fees. It's another, it's another leg of the stool to help support against it, you know, we talk about legislation, action. We talked about that a lot when it came to the landfill. However, it does take time too for legislation to pass action against some of these agencies as well. So, I can't really, don't want to speak too much on what, but it's a huge component, not only these agencies that work for the municipalities and helping, but also legislative action as well.
I could be wrong, but I think this has to do with wastewater, specifically with wastewater, so that's why, Darren, to answer your question, and maybe it would be a good idea to table this till the next, if we want some more information on this, we don't have to act on it now. But I will say at the end of last session, I spoke with representatives from, from cities across the state, and there was a wastewater bill going through that, that they were strongly opposed to, and that was the number one issue. So, it's kind of one of those things where when you do need it, you do need it, and I wish we did have it for the landfill. I don't think this is, there's one with the coalition that set up for that. But the lobbying they did on behalf of that bill specifically was far greater than five thousand dollars from the city could ever get. So I think there is a, there is a, a strong desire for that. Again, it's like one of those things where you need it when you need it, but I guess I would ask, cross-table that.
If I can add, there are communities like, such as Alexandria, City of Alexandria, that are members of this community, they have been struggling and with the PCA about phosphorus loading and to their lakes and everything. So, they are in, in more need than what the city's wastewater treatment plant, you know, that was constructed in the eighties, is operating very well. But there's some sulfate standards that the PCA is looking at, things of that nature, not to get too much, that if imposed could have serious implications on how we operate our wastewater treatment plan.
Your Honor, if it would be helpful for the council, we could ask somebody from Flaherty and Hood to attend the meeting and talk to us more about this. I know Tim Flaherty just reached out to me last week and asked if we had any questions regarding this program. We did, we did voluntarily contribute to the fund last year, so that's why they were asking if we were gonna do it again. So if, if you guys have interest in that, I can certainly invite him to the next meeting, or somebody from the coalition.
I think that would be beneficial for me anyway, just not exactly what those funds are used.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Anthony?
I would agree, I think it's worthy just to table it, but I think in addition, what would be kind of probably helpful is to get a schedule of the fees that we are paying to like League of Minnesota Citizens as well as Coalition. You know, just to understand how much we are paying out to these varied organizations, and then perhaps a recap of what, what do we kind of get, you know, that we're not duplicating some of the efforts. Yeah, and maybe, you know, maybe we can use, you know, if we, if we drop the league and put it into the coalition, you know, we get better bang for our buck, or vice versa.
No, 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 no.
Or vice versa.
Our whole insurance is with the league too, so it's a...
I hear your point. Your point is we need to look at those.
I mean, if we're, you know, rather than just cutting checks.
And, yeah, if I could just add, Your Honor, did you have a comment?
Go ahead, Rod.
Was as we, when we add these, we authorize these assessments, as I see through experience, once we put something in, it's much harder to take it out. So we'll say next year we had that, we have it because we had it last year, and it goes on. And so I'm just saying the creeping addition of even thirty-some cents to our tax levies for our citizens to me is, is, isn't justified by this. And I was in on the discussion with Morehead, I believe Morehead is the one that was really getting hammered on this. And, yes, it's a group thing, they, you know, we don't need it for this particularly, Morehead needs it really bad. But again, again, I, you know, I'm back to what other legislators have told me is that, well, look, that's what we're for, we're there for this. And if you hire someone to go after it, we're gonna help with this thing. So I just say, I think it's a false security that we are lulled, that we're in this part of this big organization, and they're somehow gonna help us out with everything. So, I, yeah, anyhow, I just would table it and...
Certainly. We'll ask someone from Flaherty and Hood to be at our next council meeting, and we can act on it then. Fair enough? All right. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Under ordinances and resolutions, item number two is a resolution approving labor agreements with the sergeants group and the lieutenants, I believe, is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. That is LALS, that stands for our Labor Representing Our Law Enforcement Services Group.
That's what I was gonna say.
That's right, you gotta close. So I'm bringing before you tonight three resolutions, so I'm gonna stay up here, we'll go through the first one. These resolutions that I'm bringing before you have been vetted by our personnel committee, and we spent several months coming up with the terms and have met with our bargaining groups and have negotiated in good faith. And I'm pleased to announce that we, we've reached tentative contracts for our police group, our supervisors, professionals, and our non-union group. The first resolution is for both sergeants and patrol officers, and that is a three-year contract with wage increases for... contract with wage increases for three years. Two thousand and eighteen would be two-point-five percent, two thousand and nineteen, two-point-eight percent, two thousand and twenty, two-point-eight percent, and these are all based off of current state wages and also other municipalities that govern police work in the state of Minnesota. We also have negotiated a change from a nine-step to a twelve-step matrix, which brings us more closely in line with our county and our competition for officers that typically leave to go work for the county. And then we've finalized an agreement, again, within our contract for a seventy-five, twenty-five cost share on our insurance. So that is the first resolution I bring before the council tonight.
Do they have any questions of Mike? If not...
I'll offer the resolution that we accept.
Thank you, Jim. Tom, second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Next item is a resolution approving a labor agreement with the Supervisors and Professionals Group. Again, Mike Hartwell.
Yes, again, thank you, council. The terms for this contract, again, has been tentatively reached for a three-year contract. That includes a wage schedule for two thousand and eighteen at two-point-five percent, two thousand and nineteen at two-point-eight percent, and two thousand and twenty at two-point-eight percent. Again, brings us in line with like agencies and other governmental agencies that we compare ourselves to, and that also includes a seventy-five, twenty-five cost-sharing arrangement between the employee and the employer for the duration of the contract.
Any questions? If not, is there a resolution to approve?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution is approved, and finally, the non-union, a resolution approving non-union employee wages, again, on a three-year term.
Yes, thank you. The terms for our non-union employees is, is very similar to the last two resolutions. That is three-year wage increase locked in at two-point-five for two thousand and eighteen, two-eight for nineteen, and two-eight for twenty. And again, a seventy-five, twenty-five cost-sharing arrangement between the employer and the employee.
Your Honor, how many non-union employees is involved?
This would be roughly eighteen employees.
And those are in supervisory positions or are part-time?
There's a variety. It's part-time, it's full-time, non-union would be our supervisory group, and then also department heads and other professional staff that are not in any bargaining unit.
I'll mark that, Your Honor.
Jim?
Yes. I'll second it. Go ahead.
Thank you, Rod.
Everybody's beating me to the punch, that's all right.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Scott or Anthony, did you guys have anything you wanted to add about the process? You know, Jim usually can give a historical context, it usually hasn't been this easy always, has it?
Well, we still have one more that we'll probably, I'll comment after we're done with that one.
We do have a TA with our teamsters group, which I'll be finalizing and bringing to the council at our next meeting.
Great, well, thank you for your work so far, Mike. Thanks, Mike. All right.
It's really nice to get this done this early in the year.
Before March?
I remember going back to March and April sometimes.
I think the other, the other piece to add is that this is a three-year agreement, so it's also relieving some pressure on negotiating every year, which is a good deal, too.
And imply when we go into the Tax Levy Committee, knowing exactly what that's going to be is going to happen.
Your Honor, I just want to say thank you to the Personnel Committee members for their work and their flexibility to allow us to negotiate, and, and Mike's work on this, and also just the bargaining units for their good faith negotiating. It makes it a lot easier when everybody comes to the table looking to get it done, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One thing, I just want to say, we didn't always agree with Mike and Andrew, I'll tell you that, me and Anthony had, we went round and round, and that's why it kind of took a little longer, I think. But no, it went good, we had really, we disagreed.
You disagreeable? I don't believe it.
We have emotional on the table, but Scott's disagreeable. Yeah, we'll second that.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Anthony, Andrew, Mike. All right, item number five is a resolution accepting STANTEC's Professional Services Agreement for Public Improvement nine-six-nine-two, which is Phase Two of the RTC Phase Demolition Deconstruction Project. Mr. Brian Ivaro.
Yes, thank you again. STANTEC has prepared a Professional Services Agreement for Phase Two RTC Campus Demolition. That's included in your packet. This Professional Service Agreement covers plans and specs for buildings number three, twenty-five, thirty-two, and continuing the process of the connecting links between building twenty-three and twenty-four, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. This is a component of Phase Two. This is very similar, mimics a first Phase One proposal, that's going to include doing environmental assessment worksheet for these buildings for consideration by shipwreck. So at this time, I'm seeking a resolution to, to accept STANTEC's agreements for design in the amount of thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars, and then also authorization pending approval with the Construction Administration in the amount of fifty-nine thousand six hundred dollars for Phase One. These costs, based on budgets thus far, and we'll know actual numbers once we open up bids for Phase One, scheduled for November second, but that outcome, if awarded, that will give us a better understanding on how we can continue to use, utilize the one-point-nine million dollars that's been reallocated from the original state grant.
I'll mark that.
Thank you, Rod.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions of Brian?
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Doug, Ann, and Aaron have been patiently waiting all this time to give us an update on the library renewal project, and Bill's been waiting patiently. All right, Bill, take it away.
Right, thank you. And, yeah, we have all our help in the crowd here, so that is wonderful. In your packet, you have a quite sizable packet here on bonding for the library. So we're at that stage where we need to get the financing done, we want to get it done by the end of this year, so that we use our bank qualification limits this year. And what that is, is cities are allowed to bond up to ten million dollars and they're bank-qualified, so banks can go ahead and, you know, bid on those if you have those type of projects going. In essence, interest rates are a little better if you're under the ten million, and Doug can explain that a little better than I can. But within this packet, and the reason I want to do that is so we free up some bonding room for next year, because we'll probably have, you know, some street projects to do next year, some various projects, so let's get this one done this year. And plus, as you know, we're in construction over there, we're underway, it's, it's going well. If you have project questions, that would be for Aaron or Ann or Brian, but Doug and I are here about the financing. And so you have the, the project budget in your packet at nine-point-four million dollars, so that's the total of the project that we're looking at funding. And then within here, we also show that we're using cash on hand. We have, the fundraisers have raised two-point-one million dollars, we have that actually, you know, two million, fifty thousand in the bank, fifty thousand in the safe up here, that'll get put in the bank tomorrow. So that's going towards the project. The net result then is this bonding package that we put together. And I'll just turn it over to Doug, Doug Green with Springstead. He is our municipal advisor, and I've been working with him on building this financing package, so.
For about three years.
Yeah, we've talked about it a long time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, again, Doug Green of Springstead Incorporated, it's always great to be here, and we have been working on this for three years, and it's great to, great to see it keep going. I will be referring to information in this, in this document called recommendations. Feel free to ask any questions along the way. The purpose of the resolution, after we get through the informational piece, the purpose of the resolution is to authorize the bond sale, allow it to move forward. We, for various reasons that we'll talk about briefly, are doing things a little bit different to make it most efficient in that, in addition to authorize the bond sale moving forward, setting the time and date of the sale, we're also establishing a pricing committee, for lack of a better word, that's what the industry uses, a pricing committee, which consists of the mayor, the city administrator, and the finance director, to approve the sale of bonds based off of parameters that the full council sets tonight. So it's not like they're going off and doing their own thing, you're setting the parameters of the bond sale this evening. What that simply allows us to do is to approve the bonds, gives us a little more flexible timing, and not have to come back for a special meeting. So it just provides a little flexibility. So starting again with the key events here on this document tonight, we're doing just what I mentioned, over the next two weeks, we'll be preparing for a rating, credit rating call with Moody's, and we'll receive that rating a few days before the sale on about November ninth. The week of November thirteenth, we will negotiate the pricing of the bonds and present that to the pricing committee, the members of, I would think, certainly Bill will be on all those negotiating calls with the underwriter. And then it takes about a month to close the process, and we'll have the money in the bank by the end of the year. Because of a few unique aspects about this sale, we thought that it was most advantageous to negotiate the sale of these bonds with, with an underwriter. Previous, over the past few years, we competitively sold bonds, and, you know, we do that when it's just very straightforward, we know exactly how much we need, we know the timing of it, there's just no ambiguity in the process. But whenever there's some flexibility needed, which, you know, in some unique aspects of the bond structure and the financing, it's best to underwrite it. You know, we say, we get, the market is so transparent, interest rates are updated with comparable sales every day, we know exactly where the market is. So it's not the highest level of negotiation, but it, we certainly do make sure that the city, and it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure the city gets the best possible terms. Moving down this page with the rating, every, the market requires a new credit rating with every bond issuance, so we will be looking to get these bonds rated, expected to stay the same at double A three, which is a very good, solid, investment-grade credit rating, which, which is going to ensure that the, the bonds, you know, they, the underwriter's going to be able to easily sell them into the market. Looking at the market, the graph at the bottom of this page, there is a five-year look at the Bond Buyer Index, which is the main municipal bond indices. There's a few of them that's used, it's kind of like the Dow Jones of the municipal bond world. And over the past five years, you see, the red line is, reflects general obligation bonds, which these bonds are, blue line is revenue bonds, not backed by general obligation. And you can see there that we're kind of right in the middle of where we've been over the past five years, and that's really, you know, where we've been over the past ten years, since two thousand and eight. And if you take this back forty years, it would be, you know, well below, well below average. Not down near the, the pre-election, you know, rates by any means, but still, I think the ten-year today finished at two-thirty. You know, there's, we're not selling these bonds for another month, so things will definitely change, but I, I don't expect things to change too much between now and then. In the interest of time, in this report, the next four pages are just narrative information about the bond issuance, but I'll turn to, not sure what page it is in your packet, but in the document, it's page six, it's the sources and uses of funds. And with these, it's always, with the sources and uses, it's always easiest to start with the uses of fund, because that's what we need to fund. And that first line, the deposit to project construction fund, that's the number that you're familiar with, at nine-point-four million. There are financing costs, which, you know, range from one-point-five percent up to two percent generally. I will tell you that these cost of issuance are twenty-five percent higher than what, you know, you would see, you know, next year, and that's simply because we've been working on it for three years, attorneys and, and Springstead. So those are a little bit higher than normal, but, you know, about twenty-five percent. So we need to generate nine-point-five million dollars to, to fund this project. How are we going to do that? If you jump up to the sources of funds, as Bill mentioned, the two-point-one million, which is just incredible commitment from the community, I don't think I've, you know, haven't seen that before in all the projects that help finance. And that's one of the unique aspects of this, is the, the timing, the changing dollar amount. That's been, over the past three years, I've just seen that inkling go up, so that changes the bond structure and how much we need to borrow. Also, the re-offering premium, which I'll go into in a second, that's other, that's the other unique component about this financing, which lends to a negotiated sale. So those two pieces, that's how we back into how much we need to borrow, so the par amount of the bonds is seven million one hundred and thirty. That could change by five, ten thousand dollars either way, between now and then, but next month, but it'll be somewhere around, around that amount. Looking at the next page, page seven is a pricing summary, and what this does is explain the premium. So if we look at the maturity value, those are the principal amounts that we are planning to sell, but with the market right now, what investors want are premium bonds, bonds worth greater than par amount. So because these is a relatively good, healthy size, seven million dollars is, is a good, good bond issuance, and a relatively short period, over six years, in that with the, we generally see, and it is depending on the market, dependent on the market, what investors want are premium bonds, and it's simple bond math, they, over the life of the bonds, if they hold it to maturity and they only get a hundred percent back, they buy something at a hundred and seven percent, they get, it matures, everything matures at a hundred percent, they make more money over time, getting that extra coupon payment than they do in the loss of that value. It's just simple bond math in a, in a rising interest rate environment, and so that, that's what they want. What's, and because we could, and we do estimate with each bond issuance how much a premium is going to be for competitive sales, but obviously, you know, we can't know exactly until they bid it, but when we negotiate it, we have, you know, pretty much down to a couple thousand dollars of what it's going to be. And we're expected to generate two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars in premium, which reduces, that just goes into the construction fund, and it reduces the amount that we need to borrow. In exchange, we pay higher coupons. So I hope this is not too much bond math at this time of the evening. And I'll go through these. The last, on page eight, another interesting aspect of this bond structure, which also, you know, lent itself to a negotiated sale, is the timing of the library construction grant. I know the city has applied for a grant of up to a million dollars, we don't know if we're going to get that, so, you know, it would, wouldn't be very prudent to put that into the bond structure. It's just assume we're going to get a million dollars and have that to be able to, you know, go towards the construction. So to be conservative, our best estimate is five-hundred thousand. Now, we expect to get something in grants, so we want to be able to pay that off whenever we do get the grant, grant award, the grant proceeds, which is around January first of two thousand and fifteen, sometime around then, when construction is finished. And so what we have in that two thousand and twenty-three is that Class 101, that's, those are the non-callable maturities, so we will not call, we will not be able to pay those off early, but we know we're going to get a grant, and so we want to be able to pay, pay that five-hundred thousand dollar maturity off sooner, so that maturity is going to be callable on March one of two thousand and nineteen. And so if we look at that interest that's being accrued, if all goes to plan, you know, we're just, we're just going to incur that fourteen thousand dollars in interest and save on the rest of those seventy-five hundred dollar interest payments. And again, on a, in a competitive sale, if you put in two maturities in the same year, underwriters will look at it and say, well, this is confusing, I'm, I'm not going to waste my time with it, and throw it away and gone, going to the next bond sale. So that's, that's one of the reasons why we decided to negotiate it. Moving on to page nine, this is the most important page, it's kind of small print there, but if we can just start with the total principal and interest, or because these are general obligation bonds, state statutes require us to cover a hundred and five percent of total principal and interest. obligation bonds, state statutes require us to cover 105% of total principal and interest. You see it ranges there from about a million, $81,000 to 1.6. So how are we going to recover that? We are going to cover that with our estimated sales tax revenue. In that first year, we're looking at eight months of sales tax revenue being available. It's very nice that you have a history of collecting sales tax, because we have a good idea of what we're going to get, because you've collected it in the past. And that $1.2 million annual amount is based on that historical collections. The next line is called levy requirement. It's not a levy, however, because under state statute, we're not, we can only pledge the sales tax revenue to the repayment of these bonds. We're also planning on getting future donations and this state library construction grant. However, because we don't have the statutory authority to pledge those revenues to the repayment of the bonds, we have to call it a levy, and then Bill just cancels that levy each year based off the, off the additional revenue, that other revenue that we're expecting. And you see, we've structured those principal maturities so that we have a, a small increase each year, a small surplus each year. And again, that surplus is based off 105%, so there's some wiggle room there in case, for whatever reason, sales tax revenues come in slightly under estimate. I don't think the next two pages are as important. They just show the, page 10 is the revenue summary, again, the estimated sales tax revenues, the donations. We've had a lot of discussions about how we should consider those, the remaining donations coming in, and at the end, we decided just to kind of split them out evenly. And then while we, while we know the state library grant is going to come in at the end of 18, for, we want to be conservative, so we just put that at the last maturity, and we're going to be able to call, call that maturity off early. And the page 11 just shows the coverage levels that are, do meet the 105% requirement. So I know that was a lot. I was expecting when, when the call out to the community for the additional $100,000 grant, I thought Councilmember Fish was going to stand up and say, I've got it, since, it didn't come.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Green?
I've got a question. When, what's the date of the implementation of the sales tax going into, into play?
The sales tax is set to start now, January 1st, 2018. So that's when the businesses start charging it and start collecting it, so then they remit it to the state in February, and then we get our first payments then, starting in March. So that's why that first year of 2018 is a little less, and like you said, about eight months or so, because it starts on January 1st, 2018.
And then, there's a follow-up to then, are our payments then on the bonds going to be monthly or quarterly or biannually?
Others semi-annually. You pay interest on June 1st and principal on December 1st.
And then, if you don't want, I've got another question. And then obviously, there's 2.1 million obviously received now, that's physically received.
Yep.
And then obviously, the balance, at some point, can we get a schedule of that sort of broken down by, by year of what we have pledged?
Something the foundation can do?
Just to see what it actually is.
Yep. Right now, we're just estimating, divvying it up over the five years, so.
Any other questions?
It's a schedule.
Look for that schedule.
We'll look for that schedule.
That's what he said, I don't know if that was.
He was waiting right to check till he knew what you were saying over there.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'd look for a resolution.
I'd make that, Your Honor.
Writing for the issuance of these bonds? Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Darren. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Thank you, Doug, thank you, Bill, Aaron and Ann. All right, next on the agenda, we have the presentation of claims in the amount of $2,345,647.75. And if there's any questions, we'll ask our finance director, Bill Sonmore, to address those.
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please. Uh-oh.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no board committee and department reports, so next up, we'll ask Amy Baldwin to give us an update on the United Properties LLP loan.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers, and it is an LLP, it is a new structure, I had to look it up, it's a limited liability, limited partnership. So we learn, all learn something.
Yes.
All the time. So the city has received a request from United Properties for the city's participation in some startup expenditures related to the new car wash to be located at 1225 North Union Avenue, the former Stop and Go. As you have noted, they have demolished the building already, and they are just waiting for some final approvals through the Small Business Administration for the permanent financing for the project. They have requested $40,000 from the city to help with some of these startup costs through utilizing the Minnesota Investment Fund pool of dollars that we have available. And because this is a working capital loan, it would be a short loan, three-year amortization with a 5% interest rate. And as you'll recall, we've had some other loans come through this year related to this program that were more real estate-based, and those had a longer amortization, but also a lower interest rate because of the security and that they were tied to the real estate. We are additionally able to get real estate security on this, on this request as well, due to the fact that the owner is putting quite a bit of cash equity down on the real estate portion of the project, which is outlined in the memo here. So staff is recommending approval of this loan, again, $40,000, three-year amortization, 5% interest. We would get a third position on the real estate below the primary lender, bank and the Small Business Administration, an origination fee to cover our costs in processing the loan and closing documents, personal guarantee from the borrowers, as well as key person life insurance policies for each of the borrower, primary owners of the business, to be assigned to the city for coverage. So overall, this is about a $1.5 million project to put this in place, so it'll be a great addition to the community. City Council has previously approved a conditional use permit related to the project, and they are just ready to move forward on this. The, you know, I mentioned the space will be, hope to see construction start soon, but that they hope to open by the end of the year, even given we're in mid-October here. So be happy to answer any questions on the loan itself.
Anthony, did you have a question?
Yep. Obviously, the, the sources of funding were 915,000, so obviously, the first position, Bell Bank, Small Business Association, then owner equity, and then obviously, the 40,000 is going to be working capital. Do you know how much, I mean, where's the balance of the working capital coming from? That's, that's also a bank loan?
Mayor, Councilmember Hicks, I guess I'm not quite sure that the.
Well, on the sources of funding, on the sources of funding, it's got 457,500 for the Bell Bank, then a 274,500 for this SBA loan, then owner equity of, of 183, which is 915, and then it says additionally approximately 500,000 worth of equipment will be financed through the equipment provider and the small business. So, you know, that's not, obviously, that wouldn't be working capital, so where's the balance of, is, is there more working capital coming into it than our 40,000?
Cash?
Maybe I'll just walk through the, the project overall, again, just to make sure I'm understanding the question, I apologize. So the, the real estate portion has, there's two SBA loans. So there's a real estate, a 504 SBA loan, that's the 274. And then the breakdown of the equipment financing is through a, a long-term lease with the equipment provider, and then a, an additional Small Business Administration 7A loan that's tied to the equipment. So those are separate financing pools.
So the cash that's in his bank for working capital, that's just going to be our 40,000?
Oh, no, okay, sorry. Mayor, Councilmember Hicks, he does have additional reserves to fund the startup operations. Yeah, we are just a portion of that, yeah.
Any other questions, Amy?
I'll offer the resolution.
Resolution to approve the loan?
There's no, it's just an update.
It's just an update.
No action.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is downtown riverfront master plan update. Do you have?
I'll update him.
Great, go ahead, Amy.
Great, thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. So coming up are some of the final items related to the downtown and riverfront master plan. On Wednesday, there is a workshop being hosted by the nonprofit group Forecast Public Art, and that is being sponsored by Springboard for the Arts and the Downtown Riverfront Council to bring that group here to help have a more focused discussion around public art, what could that look like, both the downtown riverfront master plan study area, and then thinking about that beyond. So invited to that workshop to participate are members of the Community Advisory Committee, the Public Art Commission, and various artists and arts organizations and others within the community. So per Springboard for the Arts, they have about 20 people signed up for their workshop, and that was really the goal number they were looking to bring together. It's really going to be an interactive event to help further inform the open house, or the master plan, leading into that final open house, which has been scheduled for Wednesday, October 25th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the city council chambers. We'll be pushing that out through social media and other ways as well to get participation. We've had great turnout at these open houses to date, so we're looking forward to having one more final open house related to the master plan itself. So we really encourage folks to come again between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. on October 25th here in the city council chambers. In addition, on that day, we are hosting a meeting that'll be specific to stakeholders associated with the two riverfront parking lot concepts that have been put forward, and to make sure that we're having that dialogue with those stakeholders, including property owners, business and residential tenants that are on the two blocks that would be most near the, backing up two of those existing public parking lots that have some redevelopment concepts laid out within the master plan. So we'll be doing individual outreach to those folks to attend that meeting on Wednesday, the 25th as well. So looking forward to that, and we'll just be finalizing, hopefully this week, the schedule for the consultants to come to make a final presentation before the city council and Planning Commission in November and December. So we'll be moving towards completion. Be happy to answer any questions related to those events.
Sure. Quick question, Amy. So the forecast date was, what, what day was the forecast?
This Wednesday.
This Wednesday. That's okay.
You're on the RSVP list.
I signed up, yeah.
You are signed up, yes. And that is going through Springboard for the Arts.
Springboard, yeah. Yep. And then the, the, a week from Wednesday, the 25th, the 6th, the 8th, is the open house, and is there, is there a specific meeting for, to discuss parking with the stakeholders?
Yeah, that's at 4:30.
Prior, 4:30, got it.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions, Amy? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2B then, on that same topic, is the proposed working group that we discussed last meeting, and I put together outlines, it's on your desk, a list of, you notice there's no, there are not any names on this list, but I just wanted to get this to you guys, and I'll just read for the people in the audience and the, at home, watching at home. This is just a proposed list of downtown and riverfront working group to move forward on the implementation of our master plan, which would include the mayor, community, two, two members of the Community Advisory Committee, two members of the Downtown Riverfront Council, two, well, I'm sorry, one member of the Planning Commission, one member of either the Aquatic Center or the Park and Rec Board, one downtown employer, one member of the arts community, one member of the Economic Improvement Commission, Board of Directors, and one city council liaison, and then city staff in advisory and administrative role. And the idea is that if, in the short term, we put names to these positions, but as this group continues, positions could outlast one of us, if that makes sense. So the mayor, whether that's me or anyone else, the mayor would continue in that role. If anyone has any suggestions, I'd be happy to, to listen to those. If not, if you guys approve, I'll go ahead and start putting names to these and put that committee together, so.
I have maybe just one question or suggestion, maybe.
Sir Derek?
It is called the Downtown and Riverfront Working Group, and we have one downtown employer, maybe we should have a couple, just my thought.
I think that'd be a good idea.
I think one.
There is a downtown employer, hon, isn't there?
Yep, he wants two.
Oh.
So maybe we could have a. I think there's good to have two, it gives balance, if one person doesn't, so I think that's a good idea, so we'll change that.
One from each block, maybe?
Pardon?
One from each block on this side? So you can probably, I got two names, but I will just, I'll talk to you later.
Yeah, if you guys do have specific names, let me know, otherwise, I'm going to go ahead and fill this in, and we'll get a meeting set. But do you have a motion to accept this with the addition of Darren's one more downtown?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Tom. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Next item is a city Christmas tree proposal, and again, you have this on your desk, and I will just, I'll just try to read briefly for the audience, members at home. In 2007, with generous donations from local businesses, the city purchased lights, transplanted a tree on the city hall property, and trench electric to the tree. That year, the community celebrated a lighting of the tree on the first Sunday in December. While that tree no longer exists on city hall property, the city did continue that practice by lighting a tree in Wright Park for the last several years. I believe that this is a tradition worth honoring, because it brings our community together. Residents speak favorably of this custom, and many share fond recollections, recollections of past Christmas tree lighting ceremonies at the downtown post office. I propose that our city and staff welcome city residents of Fergus Falls along with friends, visitors and guests to celebrate a lighting of our community tree in Wright Park on Saturday, December 2nd, 2017. I would also encourage businesses, service groups, classrooms, families and individuals to contribute something to the tree, whether that be donations for lights or decorations, so that we can keep this tradition going. The Downtown Riverfront Council has agreed to help sponsor a short event that hopefully will include carols, refreshments and fellowship. This event, this event is intended to be inclusive, with the hope that everyone in our community will join their neighbors in kicking off this holiday season. So if there's any questions or comments?
I think that's a great idea. The one, one thing about the, the date, as you probably are aware, is the, that's the Fergus Falls School of Dance.
Dance and dessert?
Thank you.
Yeah, dance and dessert, it's also the cantata at the Federated Church. I believe the dance and dessert is earlier in the afternoon, but what we'll try to do is work with those different groups to make sure we coordinate it so that everyone can be involved.
I got a question.
Yes, Scott?
When I was a youngster, and I don't know if they did this when Rod was, Boy Scouts, and they were around, and back when they had horses, buggies, but didn't they light the, the city lights on Main Street on Thanksgiving night? Isn't that something that was always?
Yeah, that's when we would go out and look after Thanksgiving.
After Thanksgiving, we'd always drive home in the evening and look at the lights. And so, and just another thing, Walker does a great festival on Saturday after Thanksgiving to start, kick off their, Christmas, we go there every year.
Yep.
And so I just think it should be moved up to that, to that Thanksgiving week.
Sure. And the one thing for now, guy's not here to talk, but I know the fire department generally puts those out the week af, they put them up the Saturday and week after Thanksgiving, so this was in conjunction to make sure the downtown lights were up, the lights could be on the tree. But I think in the future, we could definitely look at.
I think it should just go back, that's a tradition that I remember, I think a lot of people remember that, that, and I remember all those guys putting those things up in the storms, and they were out there working, and that's when we had real lights, probably before your time.
They were part of my candles.
I wouldn't light the candles.
Well, you're working out, just, just.
Yeah, so I think we'll, we'll see what we can do, but for now, I mean, we'll, we'll make sure that the public knows exactly when it is and where it is, and what time we'll coordinate it with, um, around these other events, so. Fair enough?
Yeah, there is an advantage, Your Honor, too, is that you're, you know, it's a little warmer. Yeah, it's a little warmer, yeah.
One week.
One week warmer.
I'll talk, I'll talk to Guy and see what, uh.
Yes, it's gonna make a difference.
It's Minnesota, Anthony.
Covered horse and buggy, all right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is downtown signs. And again, I'm just gonna, this is shorter, I'm gonna read this, um, re, relating to the downtown signs. We have received multiple requests that the city of Fergus Falls installs signs near the entrances to our communities, directing visitors to our downtown. Uh, we've heard these requests from individuals, businesses, and organizations. Believe that this simple act could go a long way towards promoting the current amenities and attractions of our downtown whilst we work to reimagine the future of this corridor. Uh, I would ask that the city council ask staff to research possible location, designs, costs, and to bring them to the next committee of the whole meeting. In addition, I would like to know the requirements involved in the designation of a historic downtown or a historic arts district, and perhaps we could ask for the recommendation of the Heritage Preservation Commission, along with the Public Arts Commission, so. If there's appetite from the council, I guess I would ask that we ask staff to work on that and bring something back. Amy, did you?
Could add?
Yeah, please do.
Um, within the implementation actions that have been drafted to date with the, uh, master plan, there is a wayfinding and signage component.
Okay.
Something that heavily has come up in our discussion, so that is a recommendation to have that, and then as well, um, the researching, the establishment of a Main Street program or re-establishment of a Main Street program, um, that could address some of the, um, district questions that you have as well. So, um, just wanted to make note of those items as being in the draft implementation action, so it might be a question, um, you know, within that plan as well.
Certainly. And I think we could have that, probably, if we could, just, I think it would be simple enough to get the information on what it might cost, or what we could or couldn't say, and then we could bring that into the discussion and see, when do we implement this? I mean, do we wait? My fear is just that we end up waiting longer on something that's simple, that we could get some, um, but I definitely, I, I, I hear what you're saying in it's, in the plan. Darren?
Is this gonna be like an adopt a sign type format, or this just gonna be?
Me personally, I just would see a sign when you all get off the interstate that says historic downtown that way. I mean, I, I, I see those signs when I go other places and they track me, or if, if we, again, I don't know what the designation for a, a historic arts, arts district is, but if I saw one, I.
Brown.
Brown, brown one, yeah.
Same thing with the, the idea of welcome to Fergus Falls, or any kind of welcoming sign. If you drive in some of our, our main roads, you don't see that, okay? You don't see anything like that. So I think that tying it even to what, um, Amy has mentioned in terms of the signage and the wayfinding, that we should consider a sign that is multi-use, or, you know, and I think the staff can work on this, but it could say, welcome to Fergus Falls, historic downtown that way, but I believe we need to have a welcoming kind of a presence on our major roads, you know? Uh, and it's, it's a good feeling when a town says welcome. Uh, we take it for granted, but, uh, so I just wanna sit, put that in. I agree with it, I agree with the, you know, tying it in, but, and I also think we shouldn't wait till we're rolling everything out. I think it's something you can, it's low hanging fruit, you can do it, and it's not that big of a.
So maybe we could, we all agree, we could get, have, let staff bring some options to us at the.
Absolutely.
At a committee of the whole meeting coming up, is that fair enough?
Yep.
Your Honor, well, one thing to consider, too, on a, um, maybe slightly lesser importance, is, um, something at the trailhead, too. You know, you come into town on the Central Lakes Trail, a lot of the cities along the trails have got, you know, welcome to so-and-so, and very, and information about what's there, and we don't really have much.
Good point. Good point, thank you.
How much information do we have at that trailhead, new trailhead? Maybe that's a, anyway, that can be talked about.
I don't think we have anything.
Yeah, there's probably room for items there.
Okay, that's consensus, I think?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds, sounds good. Last item under reports is audiovisual capabilities for committee of the whole meetings. I, I didn't type anything up, but I had a conversation with, I think, a couple of you, and we just discussed the fact that, uh, at a committee of the whole meeting, it might be nice. Uh, I think personally, I like the setting where we're at, the fact of people around the table, uh, but I have heard from the public that it would be nice for them to be able to, uh, watch and hear those meetings as well. So I guess all I would ask is that we get a, uh, quote, just figure out how much it would cost if we were to have those meetings televised at the police station versus having them here. That's, that's simple as that. We had the proposal for the video and the audio in this room, and I'm just asking, um, if we do continue having our meetings over there, and we can discuss that at the same time, whether we, whether the benefit is worth not having on, um, TV versus sitting at a table versus sitting up here. So I think there's, there's a good discussion there, but I think just knowing what it would cost to, uh, televise those committee meetings would be part of that discussion. Jim?
I think if it's gonna be a lot of money, we just move things here. I mean, we have a budget we have to try and follow, and that was not in our budget for the coming year, so.
Yeah, and I think it's part of just that, that discussion needs to be had.
And just going back to, when we moved over there to sit down at a table, for us to sit around and not be up like this, I think it got, our communication got better over there, um, we could speak freely, just, I mean, it's, public would be more welcome to come and sit with us, but it wasn't like we're talking, you know, down or whatever, just, I just, I think it's a great thing to be over there, whether we had the video, I mean, if you, that's why I went there, to go there and be more of a meeting type, not a, um, a councilman.
Hierarchy structure.
I just don't, I, I think it's a great, I think it's a good, I really, I really enjoy those.
I agree with you, I just wanna just have that discussion, and we can row, weigh the pros and cons, but just if we could just find out what it would cost to put two cameras and, and two microphones. I mean, these microphones seem to work on the table from what I can tell, right?
Your Honor, I'm, I would think that we could look at some sort of webcam, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be an expensive.
Sure.
You know, television camera, I mean, we, we have web cameras at, at the plant, and I mean, they're crystal clear even at night, you know, that aren't that much money. You know, I mean, I think we don't have to go high-end, you know, high-end, I think we have to use, you know, technology that's available today that's relatively cheap.
Yeah, I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off there. I just thought, Brent, you're, uh. No. No, no, but I'm gonna call on you here. I, as a member of the PEG access board, would you be willing to work with Jim and to figure out what exactly might be, uh? Absolutely. Could you do that for us? Yeah, I plan on going to the meetings, I didn't know when they were. Sure. So, actually, I know there's one here this Thursday, and I'm planning on attending. Is there something you could? Yeah, we could, I, you know, I mean, Jim would be the one to ask anyway. Sure. Maybe you can bring it back to our next committee. Okay. That sound all right? Okay. Thank you, Brent. All right. Next on the agenda is old business. First item is a dairy property update. Mr. Steve Erickson, speaking of patients.
This was a real entertaining, uh, meeting, and thank you for entertaining me. Uh, the, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, uh, the purchase agreement for the dairy site was, uh, approved by the council on September fifth. Execution of the document was September seventh. The document had a hundred and twenty-day contingency period in order to conduct due diligence primarily on the environmental, geotechnical aspects of the property. And, uh, I'm not sure of the first meeting date of the council in January, but the due diligence date is January fifth. So I'm assuming that a decision will be made or presented to the city council on December eighteenth to review the information that we have, to determine whether or not the council wants to, uh, proceed with the purchase agreement. In the interim, um, due diligence has been going on, uh, in two phases, with the, as I said, environmental, uh, geotechnical aspects of it, um, those are covered under the hundred and twenty-day period. The other thing that's been reviewed is the title and survey. Those are outside of the due diligence period. In other words, property can't close until the title is corrected. So these dates of the January fifth date will hold true. The purchase agreement says that the closing would take place thirty days after that, but that date is likely to be extended beyond that point. Um, the, the title continues to be dealt with. We have most issues planned, uh, with the attorney for the seller on how they will deal with those issues. We're still deal, trying to deal with the railroad easement issue, but that will be resolved also. Um, Brian, uh, Gabro, the city engineer, maybe he could tell us a little bit about the type of, uh, work that's been done on the site. Uh, reports are not done, but at least he can explain what they're doing, why, and maybe, uh, any next steps on that, if you would.
Absolutely. Yes, uh, thank you, uh, in regards to the phase two, the, uh, authorized by the city council and the owner. Uh, currently, uh, Bron Intertech has completed the infield work that consists of geotechnical work, left interviews to do, uh, with a few of the individuals, uh, perhaps associated with this project. Analytical data, part of the reporting was taking, uh, soil samples and doing analyticals on that. Uh, we're still waiting for some of that data, but I spoke with Bron. Uh, I believe what we should be, not this week, but the end of next week, should have a draft report to start reviewing, uh, and I'll disseminate that out and to the council and everything. Uh, following that, uh, we're pretty much, uh, early November to get a final report with some updated demolition costs based on their findings. Uh, so at this time, we're, we're, uh, pretty much on schedule in regards to what their scope of services are at, so if you can answer any questions, Amy, yeah?
Very good. So the other thing that we've been working on, uh, was to try to answer Councilmember Fish's question of how are we gonna pay for this? And one of the things that, uh, we investigated was, are there any loans, grants, and so forth that might be available from the state that could help buy down these costs? On Friday, we met, we being the mayor, uh, city manager, and myself, met with the deed people in St. Paul to discuss potential loans and/or grants that might be available to the city. Um, there were two grants that could possibly work. The primary one that we know that's available today is called the cleanup revolving loan. This was originally set up as a loan, but after discussions with the deed people, they have, uh, suggested they could be quite flexible in how to interpret what that means. And, uh, including things as low, or as, uh, zero interest, extended term, up to fifteen years, uh, potential backloading of payments, um, and also the ability to convert part of the loan into a grant. So it really gets back to, uh, something that could be very workable for, uh, the city. Um, the, uh, the city would pay for the, in this instance, the, the funds would be used to remediate issues within the property. For example, we know there's asbestos in the property, uh, there is, um, mercury on the property that was in the process of being cleaned up. Uh, those things are what this particular fund was used, or was designed for, remove issues that are hazardous substances. In the original budget, those numbers, uh, were estimated to be between two hundred and fifty thousand and four hundred thousand dollars, depending on how you categorized it. But we also talked with them about the fact that the building's been standing empty for fifteen years. Some of these things, for example, the mercury spill that took place in the building was caused by vandals getting into the building, uh, getting into the electrical equipment, and the mercury came out of a switch. Well, the building also has mercury vapor lights in it, that's a sense, a source of potential contamination. We know that fluorescent fixtures have potential mercury within the bulbs themselves. The ballasts in the older fixtures had PCBs in them, though the, the, the ballast had to be removed prior to any demolition. Obviously, the, the light bulbs would have to be. And the other thing that's in the building is a phenomenal amount of pigeon manure. So the question that we asked, and, and, uh, it was quite, quite an interesting discussion, does this ever come up? And the answer was, yes, we've run into it before. The problem with pigeon manure is it causes an unhealthy situation for people that are in the building working. So if you're doing pre-demolition work, and you've got all of these fiberglass sleeves from removing the steel sprinkler pipes, for example, on the ground, and pieces of styrofoam and so forth, that's all covered with pigeon manure. So if we can get pigeon manure classified as a hazardous material, and deed is looking at that, if we can get the ballasts in the fluorescent fixtures and fluorescent bulb designated as a hazardous material because it's possible somebody could break into the building, knock these things down, break the bulbs down, we have another spill, then those items could theoretically go into this, um, cleanup loan eventual grant. So that number could increase from two hundred and fifty thousand to a higher number, but what that does is if that number increases, the cost of the demolition goes down, because currently that's in the demolition pile. So, uh, this program is currently funded. Uh, there is, it's not a competitive process. The, uh, the, the application process is fairly straightforward. Really, the only cost associated with it is, is staff time, although there is a requirement of an appraisal to be done when the application finally goes in. Well, there's an appraisal requirement for the L C C F R funding, there's an appraisal requirement for the city to purchase property anyway. So you could theoretically bundle these into one appraisal, uh, instead of spending three, three times the amount of money. So, um, I think, uh, I guess I wanna cover a couple more points of the, the, uh, loan. It is a, uh, program whereby the city spends the money first, and then it's reimbursed. They're reimbursed, uh, seventy-eight percent of the cost, and then if it, you're, you're negotiating your terms, but anyway, that's how it works. Um, I would like to, um, see if we can start working on the application. I talked with, uh, the deed people today about, um, starting the process but not doing the appraisal component of it, because we didn't wanna spend the money before we knew the city was gonna move forward with, with the purchase. And they said, yeah, I think we can do that, we can review what you're doing to make sure that we don't have questions on it. So that sort of helps with the timeframe of getting the money lined up. Um, then the next program that they have is called a demo, demolition loan grant. This grant is used for tearing the buildings down. Now, the, it could also be used for remediation of some of these hazardous materials, but it's not as flexible as I believe the staff would like the loan to be, because the staff would like to get the money out the door. So, uh, this is a program that has not been used as much as it should, and that's why I think there'd be more flexibility with it. The demolition loan grant, um, is an, is a competitive process. The other problem with the demolition loan grant is there isn't any money in there now. Last year, they had a million dollars, they spent it immediately in February, soon as they could take applications. What they told me was if the legislature funds this in the upcoming session, that money would be available for applications in August. Again, um, they believe that this is a prime candidate for that type of loan, which was designed specifically to, um, I'm sorry, loan that turns into a grant, uh, specifically for municipalities purchasing dilapidated, blated property when there's no developer present. So it sort of fits that category. The question is, how do you get it funded? And to me, that's an education process of talking with the legislators, perhaps working with some other, uh, outstate communities to, to see if this type of program can be funded. And the reason why I bring that up is, one of the problems with deed grants to outstate Minnesota is it requires, in most cases, to have a developer available to immediately start a project, and that's not very likely to happen in almost all of the outstate communities. So the money ends up going to a few, in a few instances, maybe to more. So the money ends up going to a few, in a few instances, maybe to Moorehead or a couple other places, but most of the money's spent in the metro area. There was an article in the paper today that I thought, how ironic that this would come out today because we just talked about this the other day and last week. The terms of the demolition loan, it's a 15-year amortization. There's no payments for the first two years. It's a 2% interest rate. The, if a, if a development occurs, they will forgive half of the loan. They will not pay back money that's already been spent by the municipality. So for example, the city was to do that project, and five years down the road, they've made three years' worth of payments on this loan. Five years down the road, the city sells that property to a developer. The developer builds some housing on it, it becomes taxable. They would waive half of the, let's say that you borrowed a million dollars. They would waive half of that million dollars or $500,000. So it's, it's, it's an excellent program. Nothing that I'm aware of will pay for everything, but I think if we look at these programs, we can pay a lot of it back. One caveat on the cleanup revolving loan is it must be a project that's, that is developed on it that is a, let's say, a private entity, something that's going to create jobs, something that is going to create taxes. So you have to start out with a, with a project. Well, we described theoretically using the, the concept plan that was done with the master plan, saying here's, here's what it might look like, apartments and riverfront and so forth. So that gets submitted into the, into the application of here's what our project is. 10 years down the road, the city says, you know what? We want to build a swimming pool on there. We don't want to use that for apartment buildings. Now you sort of have violated the fact that it needs to be a taxable entity. So you'd probably have to pay the money back. So if you decide to go down the route of that type of, of loan or grant, you need to be aware that you're probably not going to be using it for a public purpose in the long I would like to see if we could get started doing the application of the cleanup revolving loan, and then also to see if we can start doing the backup work for the demolition loan grant. On the cleanup revolving loan, I would like to see if we can reconvene the task force with the addition of perhaps somebody from economic development that can help with the documentation or whatever associated with the application to deed to start this work. I have, I, let me get to my next point, and then you can come back. I'm sorry, I'm hogging the floor here. One other item that comes up as fitting within all of this stuff is LCCMR. What does that cover? How do we maximize that? How do we maximize the development potential of the site? And one thing that I mentioned before was can we include the Barefoot Park as part of that project in concept, not transferring titles or anything, but saying, yes, it makes sense to be able to talk about utilizing Barefoot Park as part of the LCCMR encumbered land or as potential for redevelopment of a portion of it. Mr. Fish mentioned to me a concern about structures that were on there. I'm not making any judgment about it. I did see, I've been by there a few times, and I see people using them, sitting under that shelter. And I'm not suggesting anything would happen with that. I'm just asking whether or not we could start looking at that as well. So those are my, that's my report, but my request.
I know the Barefoot group built that, that shelter with money that they made from hosting the national.
Thank you, Steve. Any other questions of Steve? Would it make sense to have, Amy, have you look at the application with the, not the due diligence team, but the task force?
Right. And it's, in essence, it's almost the same group as our negotiating panel, as one or two other people. With it, it includes many of the city staff. It doesn't include economic development.
So including economic development in that conversation to discuss that application, is that, that makes sense to the council? And then if we could maybe ask the legislative committee to get together and report back on, or at least have a chance to discuss the strategy for the second part of the funding, the demolition loan fund?
Your honor.
Yes, Rod.
So Steve, if I'm hearing your figures, and I write, and I put them together, as to, you know, Councilman Fish's question about how we're going to pay for this, you mentioned two different options here. One was about a 200 and some thousand to something else potential. Was that the forgivable one?
Well, if we do a good job negotiating, they're both going to be forgivable.
Okay, and then, but the other one.
Portion of that, portion of that first one.
Portion. And the other one was about 500,000.
Half of it. Well, depends on.
Depends on the price overall.
Depends on what date you're using, but theoretically, you could be talking about 500 to 700,000, I think.
Yeah, so with the LCCMR and the potential that you could have over a million dollars in either grant, grantable or zero interest loans until you develop something.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
One of the other things, the reason, you know, when I talked about backloading payments on the revolving loan, if you assume that the, that the city decides to go forward with this, how would this fit? Well, first, you'd close on the property, pay the million dollars, and you'd get 600,000 back from LCCMR. The next thing you'd do, if you get the revolving loan, is you would remediate as much of the stuff in the building, including things that might normally be called pre-demolition removal. Now, if you can work through the legislative process, the education of the legislators prior to the session beginning, and you can get this funded, now you're into, you may be into August by this time anyway, but at that point, if you can apply for the demolition loan and get it, now you can use that money to demolish the building. So talk about, you know, we know the demolition loan is going to have two years of no payments, and then interest at 2%, and then, then an amortization of a remaining 13 years over that. So that we can figure out what the, what the cost is of that. The other component of the revolving loan is if you can look at trying to backload as much of the repayment as possible, and I don't know that this is possible, but let's say that you negotiated a deal where you said, we're going to not have payments for five years, and then in the fifth year, you sell that property for redevelopment, you now have the money there to pay off the loan without ever making a payment on it. That's sort of the theory of it. Now, I don't think you're going to get five years backloading, but you certainly can structure the deals so that the money is more towards the end in hopes that you're actually going to accomplish the development, because I actually think it will, would occur.
Jim.
That LCCMR money, the 600,000, does that come right away? Does the trail have to be built first before you get that? That comes right away, as soon as we buy the land?
That's part of the acquisition, and it comes, I think they said 30 days reimbursement. But there are issues with that, and that is, we need to make sure that the requirements of LCCMR, what can be done with the property that's encumbered by it, fit within the master plan. In other words, river access, fishing, and so forth and so on. So we need to, we need to deal with that. There can't be contamination on it. We can't have a building on it. So being able to slide, getting, getting permission from LCCMR to be able to slide this 16.6 acres of land further downstream and onto the Barefoot Park area frees up our ability on the site and so forth, our timing issues.
Thank, yes, and?
Rod's first, and then I'll go. Okay. I, we, I took our lobbyist, Joel Carlson, down. He wanted to see the site because we'd kept him up to date a little, and he's, and he's aware of the deed now. And so we toured the site, we got out, we walked, and he was very impressed. He said, it's really a gem of a site. But he also asked the same question about the use of the funding as we go forward, the LCCMR constraints. And what that says is, it says, river protection and trail development. So what the LCCMR is interested in is that we have a buffer zone. We don't build, you know, an amusement park or businesses on that, that trail area, and that we eventually work to develop a trail. The money doesn't depend on developing the trail, having it done, just simply that we set that aside for a trail area walk. And then the other thing that is interesting is that the greater Minnesota parks and trails, in their future criteria for application, are going to be funding things like fishing piers, et cetera. Now, that's run by the DNR, so that's overseen by the DNR. And as we talked, he agreed that when you have a DNR involved in that, and they're allowing structures like this for public access, the point of it is to allow the public to use the land, not to restrict them. So it's very likely that this could fit in with other possible amenities that aren't, you know, aren't violating that, that general idea of the LCCMR.
I think that we can't go too far down the road without making sure what we're doing and including the different divisions in here so that you don't trap yourself into thinking you're going to get something, and then you screwed yourself.
Right.
So anyway.
Thank you. Anthony, do you have a comment?
I would like to suggest that we probably refer all of this back to that working group, and then they look at the, obviously, the three items, which is the cleanup revolving, you know, the demolition, and, and look at, you know, how we incorporate the LCCMR, or Barefoot Park into the LCCMR, and then we come back to the council. And obviously, you know, as Steve mentioned, there's quite a few city staff on that, and if, if we need to engage a different city staff person, I think, like, you know, on how, how we deal with the LCCMR, I think we can do that.
Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you very much.
We'll move on. Under new business, Anthony, you had a.
Yep.
Bikeable community workshop?
Yeah, obviously, the Pedal Fergus Falls have been, sort of, obviously, some correspondence with city staff about a 2018 bikeable community workshop. And it's basically, it would be allocation of a date in 2018 where you try to engage people, you know, regional staff, community leaders, advocates, in a workshop to discuss biking in the community and try to come up with sort of, you know, some consensus on plans of how you, how you look to the city to be a biking community. And obviously, as we're, you know, we're a bicycle-friendly community, I think it would be good for us to host a day. It's a day workshop, but obviously, we need support from city staff in terms of the application. Patrick and Wayne would obviously be more than willing to help write the application, but the deadline is the first of December, and we got a negative comment from city staff about endorsing this. And I think, you know, had I not been covered on this, I wouldn't have known that, and it would have, it would have died on the vine. So I think I would like to offer that, you know, we.
Certainly carve out the capacity, but I wouldn't say staff was dismissive of this request.
I make a motion. Instruct his staff to assist with a 2018 application for a bikeable community workshop.
I'll second. Any further discussion, comments?
I have a question. What would be involved?
Filling out the application, then setting, setting up a meeting place.
Any other questions?
Just a general question on the workshop, would the city host and pay the expense of the workshop, or is that something through the, or is it just that we're?
I think, I think they pay, you pay a fee to come to the workshop.
Gotcha. Thank you.
While we're talking about the bicycle stuff, I would like to address to, I got an email this morning that was accusatory of city staff of not putting material that was provided to the city on the website from the Pedal Fergus Falls group, and the reality is, that was already on the website. So there's this talk going on out there, it's, you know, that we're, city staff is turning things down or not being cooperative. You know, I'd really encourage people to understand what the facts are before that happens because that was already located on our city website, and we're more than receptive to take that information and to share it and do whatever we need to do. We've been a very positive partner with the bicycle community and all the other efforts that are going on. And so I just really caution people to understand what the reality is before we jump on people about being negative or dismissive, because as a staff, we pride ourselves in these partnerships, collaboration, and being open and receptive to any positive change. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much.
As far as the process, your honor, the bike, we have a ped committee, right? A bike ped committee? That is, a city committee. And so my curiosity is, why doesn't this move through the committee up to the council instead of coming through other channels? Does the committee feel we're not receptive? And who is the liaison on the council on that committee? Is it Tom, or?
There, I don't believe there.
Is there no liaison councilman? Maybe that's one of the process problems. I'm just wondering, because I've seen, I've heard a couple of these. It's good to dispel those things and, you know, but I think we could, if we had somebody on there like Tom or somebody, we could more easily, I think, avoid this kind of misunderstanding.
And I'll, you know, we just learned of this request today. We just got copied on an email from, I don't even know, Patrick or somebody today. So they did not send it through the B-PAC. We're not opposed to sending it through the B-PAC.
No, I understand.
We literally just learned about it today.
And I'm not saying accusing, I'm saying that clarifying would be helpful, and having that link, so.
Wayne Hurley was on. When he was on the council, was the liaison.
Oh.
So.
So can I recommend that, Tom, would you be willing to serve on that?
Absolutely.
All right. So we have a, we have a motion on the floor asking staff to work with that committee. In favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Second motion is for Tom Rufford to serve as liaison to that committee. Is there a second?
I'll second, your honor.
Just in all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. One other, Rod, in the interest of time, could we ask that staff bring back the sale of public land when our, it just, in the interest of.
Just a public note, I want it noted that this came in because we've discussed the Old Smokey, okay?
Yep.
And because in that motion about Old Smokey property, I think it's .8 acres or something.
Little triangle piece, yep.
Yeah, that, that, that would go into the general fund. And all I'm saying is, I just didn't, I wanted to avoid a policy decision of that, and so it's fine, the staff can work on it. I just want it noted, you know, that typically, we're not going to take assets and then put them into the general fund that way, you know, in other land sales.
Sure.
Can I make one note to that?
Absolutely.
Not just an excuse to stand up. When it goes into the general fund, it's not gone, so you can be rest assured of that. You could, at some point, reserve a fund balance for that portion of a land sale or something. Council can take those actions. We reserve fund balances, designated actually would be the actual, the correct term that you would do. We, city council designate X dollars from land sale for X. You could set up a, a separate fund. Ultimately, when we get to the financial reporting, that would all get rolled into the general fund. That's accounting rules, so, but we could certainly keep it separate, but you wouldn't have to. You could get to your same impact if you wanted to do that by having it in the general fund and designating the fund balance. So I won't belabor that anymore, but wanted to just point that out.
Thank you, Bill.
Fair enough.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Okay. No other items on the agenda? Let's see, just a couple quick. October 17th, tomorrow night, the Minnesota Book Award winner's reading and conversation at M State. Really looking forward to that event. And then, as Amy mentioned, October 25th, from 5:00 to 7:00, downtown riverfront open house at the city council.
Six to eight.
Six to eight, I'm sorry. I guess, I wrote that down, six to eight. Have it wrong here. Six to eight at the, right here at City Hall.
Is Scott grilling ribeyes for that? I heard he does that out at the golf course. Are you grilling for that open house, you grilling ribeyes?
I am not. They did not request my services early enough.
I thought you were the one who said you had ribeyes the other day.
Did he get on your schedule?
All right. It's not on his schedule.
It's not on his schedule.
Something else come for the council? We're going to adjourn this meeting to a closed meeting for the city administrative performance review as permitted by Minnesota statute. We are adjourned, and we will not be re.
Competing.
We need to keep him out of England so we can get rid of that accent.